Yes. We have two add-ons to the agenda. We have ordinance number three seventy-one, which is the vacancies in office ordinance. We're adding that, and we're also adding in consecutive sessions. Approval of minutes for maybe twenty seconds.
I read the minutes from twenty twenty seconds, and we read it directly. Make a motion for approval of the second.
Bill.
Okay, I'm up to bills. We have one provision. Uh, we've done both. The property, we have sixty-three seventeen. That's which is going to change. Our total is going to share to eighty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. So we're adding ninety-four thousand for the seven, and that's our total. Seven million or standard, uh, six thousand seventy-seven dollars and fifteen bucks. With that, any questions?
Where is this deposit in the way?
So it was a deposit fund that Bishop added after the conference. For dating struggle. He was out and he got to.
Oh, okay. So it won't be on the one you have, but I can print your name if you want.
Ministry of Public Office.
I think something's where. But I will support obey and defend the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State, together with all ordinances passed or hereafter to be passed, is accountable. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. But I have not paid or contributed or promised to pay or contribute either directly or indirectly. Any money for other valuable things to interfere in my work. And that I will not directly or indirectly any money for other valuable things. For the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office. Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Jackie, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Enjoy your time. I'll come down when I have problems with you. Don't you be worrying about that.
Uh, did I have other comments? Two parts of the program, one is the ten, and then ten, eleven, ten, eleven, care online portal for the employees. And then, second part would be, uh, set up online civic benefits. I love the little ones. That could be through the team of the company that will be Washington National and have to see that. All sorts of things, actually, in the Constitution. But two things actually, this is the US government first page. This is government policy for anything that, that most of myself think that. What's called on highlights. Got the text right. No cost to the employee, and then no cost to the employer, self-run, that tax issue. It's pretty basic, and then for the person. So, and also, closest municipality that I look at is really more, sort of, in fact. So, two things is, uh, we look at the two more, the whole thing, the whole thing, the second page. This is getting employees now to be able to purchase benefits without using a ticket. But, uh, the employer, the United States, can't, uh, have a tax for the purchase of a ticket. God, you might combine the ten program with the ten program, which is a non-civic program, which is not a good way to do it. But, uh, options to go to, actually, to go and play. Uh, employees just say, uh, create a universal, create a lot, like, create a high value incentive. So, the third thing. The men and care management program, the theory is, I said, when you put this, this is an online portal. That third relation has some, you know, so. That, uh, ten, twelve, fourteen. So first, first thing is a man who are into them, they're, they're, so that's, uh, telehealth. And if you guys are doing telehealth in our lives. So, um, it's, uh, typically used as actually, sort of, like, when I've tried it through the four days, kind of, ten, thirteen, there on the phone. The nice thing about this one is, so, okay, you know, job force, and, you know, their actions, the home insurance, it would have been claimed on the home insurance. If I had a pool, it would have been more planned every two, twelve months, but I have to go basically. So, what overall should the goals of this is try to keep the home insurance, which is, to be, uh, scattered off of this. But if it happens in a five-minute, four-minute time, it's going to actually offer the thing to get this, unfortunately, to get this, it's just a question. Yeah, that, maybe something, maybe I'll, that. Second, uh, piece of program is hopefully only looks to guide me in one program, like, to help people, because not because I've got it, or they are not, but it's, uh, different. There's two pieces, the organization and corporate care, which is, those are the main program. And once they have the five, ten minutes, they're, they're, there's this online, uh, before you realize that, the question. And all this, then, we try to, uh, uh, really, this is by, it's a little, uh, education, so we have to be, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, support to be program. And then the last two pieces are the male, um, library, capital, helping one, basic general health, and second, it's an activity, stress, uh, factor. So, when in the quarter, it puts this kind of program in place, it creates a task. So I'm going to go through that in a couple of seconds. Skip over the key, paycheck, so, 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 next, wait. So, this is a straight type of task, second. On the left side, you have a paycheck, a dollar, ten, or, or, fifty, ten, there's, uh, ten, fifty, ten. So if you look at the top of the left side, you've got a monthly gross pay. Second thing, you've got whatever it's, although, you know, it's like pre-tax, you need to take a lot of tax on that. But then the tax, when it comes to this again, it's something, so, you've got the, the whole, it's, it's a lot of, uh, that, that all makes sense. Basically, you take a paycheck. Then on the right side, um, you've got a monthly gross pay, and then you've got, uh, doing medical pre-tax, and then you've got the PCM pre-tax. So that is, if you were actually selling the online pool, that's what we're saying, for, for that, so. So if you're like a pre-tax, so that, well, with the tax on that, twenty-seven, you do that, so. So because your tax won't put us down, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, that's your control of the finance. So that comes down to two seventy-seven, five, you know, different, you know, five, that's one, two seventy-seven, two seventy-four, that's what I'm talking about. You've got tax save, three five, about three taxes, like, seven three. So if I'm out of the two seventy-four, maybe I notice two, these guys actually run, running towards. And then twenty-five, and I put, it's less than over two, running, dancing, which is, which is actually previous, but we, you know, but that's this power. That, that would be small, different, it destroys your, using that, from the five. The twenty-five numbers, uh, range, it's an average, uh, so, average is about a hundred fifty dollars, one hundred forty, uh, but that's what's in the last, uh, place. But you guys, the majority would interact in a hard cash, so, uh, this is, this is, this is, this is, didn't happen like, uh, what I do is, when people do this, uh, they don't pull in, they don't, they don't, which is, section three, I think, in the, in the, in the, yes, all in? Okay, then, this is the part that's different, so, the PCM pre-tax, that comes from the tax code, called section one twenty-five, you have probably familiar. It's section one twenty-five, that's also on the cap two, that's what allows you to pre-tax, so, right? So the new one is from two thousand thirteen, from the board, uh, it's section one of five, so that's the similar reimbursement, the other thing is highlighted, uh, the, 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 the. And if you have a program like this, and you're everything, you have to write, you all tell me, or file all that paperwork, and you're qualified, we're allowed to go ahead and reverse that similar, the, 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 on the same paycheck. At the same time, to the employee. Now, what do they have to do to qualify? Well, they want to have to be a full-time employee, they have to be W two, and a half that's, you know, like, uh, like, like, so, you, you, employers, if you see, if you, if you're spouse, if you, if your parents, if they're running, or, if you, or, they're following, and all that. Uh, and then the last thing is they have to be willing to participate in the court. So, what is participation? Minimum participation is they go in and they set their D M in the password, and then they have to be at least at five and more, ten minutes, like, six, once a week. So it's not a super wild amount of time for them to participate in the court. But that's like the thing, and the first thing, typically, they ask them to do is do a little help assessment, that pays in compensation, it's a version. But if it was a second court, the report should be at least once, then they qualify, put that in the version, and then it's in the paycheck, right, exactly, and that's it, and they're great, they're on paper. The other, the next two pages are just kind of examples about what it looks like on a typical paycheck.
From a band called Ivory Rock and Roll. And they had reached out saying that they were coming through Ocean County on their way to another place. And had offered to play in Ocean County for Cory. And we comped the rooms for them. Um, so we have already. We've already done the majority of our summer concert series for Torrington. Which is already planned. We've gone to city council. This is starting now. It's going on literally right now in Torrington. So I'm writing this lovely flyer for you guys. If you could go up there for all of you to attend. I'm gonna get it to everybody. So, um, anyway. My concern was that I really wanted to bring something to Lingle because we. We love you guys, obviously. I'm a good time dog and my son goes to Lingle Theater. I love Lingle. So my big push was to work with you guys. Reached out to Emily, reached out to Tabitha. And it just seems to be working so well. Everything is coming together perfectly. Like within a matter of few days, we had everything just boom, just perfect. Called Rich, figured out what the date is available. The band said that the date was gonna work for them. So here I am trying to see if I can get everything through to you guys. And make sure that I'm following your protocol, your ordinances. According to how City of Lingle would like it to be done. I don't want to step on any toes. I know how it is with City of Torrington. I do not know how it is with City of Lingle. So I also have, um, one other girl didn't speak with Edra. Edra's going to be on vacation. Um, I'm gonna have a conversation with Cory. Uh, Cory, uh, and I have discussed having extra manpower to control crowds. Um, our plan is to have a theater garden and or whatever. City of Lingle would want us to do contain. Tell me. The world is your oyster. The bitches. You're a local bar. So sorry. Go ahead, put that in. So setup would be from five, at, starting at five, concert would start at six and would end at nine. And the, uh, fire department has graciously offered their time and their manpower to offer a hamburger fry and a dog fry at Food Will donation, which is amazing. So we had conversations that I'm not going to bring in any other food vendors to value with that. We are actually, let me backtrack. We're gonna bring in Sweet Blue just for dessert and not for your big conference. Um, we are gonna bring in Beachill also for the ice cream. And then we might bring in a lemonade stand or, you know, one of those things. But other than that, we're gonna just offer the hamburger fry with hot dogs. And, um, also working with Emily, uh, regarding the open swim. We have a sponsor who's paying for the open swim. So the Elvis Club has graciously donated their money to pay for that. So.
And that would just be the next one?
No, it'd just be six eight with them. And then AcuScreen testing and Branded Indigo Company, um, are also gonna donate either to Beachill or to some way help out in, they want, they would like to sponsor a couple, they're a couple of whatever we need help with.
Uh, AcuScreen?
Uh, Branded Indigo Company and Pretty Color.
So, quick question. So are, the, are we using a van shell or are we just in park?
My request would be to utilize the van shell because they are, all they need is a stage. They come with the equipment, they come with the lights, they come with whatever. They are ready to go.
So do we have a, the van shell?
Yes. I have the rental agreement, um, and so we, Go Ocean is willing to cover the fee. We have no qualms about that, but it needs, we are going to pay whatever it needs to be done. Um, we just want to make sure that, you know, I guess I pressed every note on the toes and we're doing the right thing by you guys and.
Is, um, the farmer gonna be your payment or?
They would need. I have a catering permit. Um, would you require each vendor, like, uh, um, like Sweet Blues? Or any of those little vendors to fill out a permit as well? Okay. Okay. Do you want a beer garden? Or are you okay with, because I know.
I spoke with Jess yesterday to kind of, um, help out and get a plan. And she said that they, they didn't feel like they needed to have an actual roped off area. They would just brace the people and monitor it that way. So she said that other entities have parties there with open containers and they don't do anything to offer anything like that. And she are, she has the bracelets and they have the man cave to that.
So that's been more than for helping, so Cory knows your job.
I think there's been more. I don't know.
And Cory and I also discussed that if necessary, we can also, um, cover the fee to have extra, um, manpower from the Sheriff's Department as well if needed. But Cory and I can also just not have, you know. If that's what you guys would also want, we can do that.
I think that. Okay, should we give these out to a little support for? What is, what Cory's gonna allow you on the community area?
Okay. Okay. How many would you like?
I personally, I think that's the law. In the interest.
Your answer. Okay. So Cory and I will delegate and figure that out. Um, that is not an issue at all. We. Perfect. The other conversation that Tabitha and Emily and I were having was where to put fire department and both Beachill and, um, Sweet Blue. And our conversation was kind of talking about blocking off Plymouth Avenue, but the also the concern is parking. Um, our thought process kind of sort of was. This comes from a moment just a little bit ago, but mainly blocking off the area of south of the park and south of the van shell. So we turn onto the main road. Yes. And just have those spots where we have the trucks, the pool area, just mainly the, just great.
So we have paths that we can stay there. That's not an alley.
Okay.
They have us in the alley.
The alley, the alley.
We always, not we always, just paths, but we would just say the alley. They just ran down the alley.
Okay.
Walked off the alley.
Okay. And that's totally fine. I just was trying to reconsider it of like other people so that they can see the van too. Um, the people that are, you know, work in the food and whatnot. Um, we also decided not to have craft vendors, um, because that's gonna take away spots for people to have their chairs and, you know, for people to bring gates or whatever else they wanna do.
Quick question to everyone else. If you have to attract some stuff, could they or what's the rule? Can they just utilize those parking spaces all along itself or on the, uh, east of the park?
When, when they were doing switch election apart to Lingle. That was one of the requests was to use that turn lane. And I would be honest with you, I don't remember if Emily would state shot right in the door.
But this is maybe the turn. This is the actual parking space.
When you take the parking, you're still on state, state highway. On the south side.
You'd have to have a state.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just personally, just because we are gonna have kids there, especially on a free swim. My preference would be the alley because we don't have kids running towards the highway. That's, I mean, that's my, that's my personal safety preference. So. And if the alley is blocked off or.
I don't think it's not kids anymore. We would block off the alley or. Four residences that's willing to take over.
Okay.
One of them that's used to utilize that supply.
Okay. Okay. Um, do you have any other questions for me? No, sir. I'm trying. I wanted to be a block guard. That's my, that's, I didn't want to be a block guard in Torrington. And then she was like, it's a regal.
Excited to go to fun.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Thanks guys. I hope to see you later. Come look closer. I'll be right here.
Stand over here so everybody can hear me. Anyway, my name's George Sibley. For those of them who are new resident in downtown. Nothing air last year, many meetings, hard to believe people having some transparency to get the bad. And which most people should be aware of by now, you heard it two months ago. But according with this order, this week seven one, got the number right. We've got a cure. We've got what's coming in and what? We'll see. Down the road first. Tonight I want to talk about incident that I made on Saturday. I got done with my comments. No resident. Wanted to make a comment, but he's denying it. Because he didn't sign up and she didn't sign up. To talk. Now, I don't know where you guys know this or how you guys like to do this. The man's only gonna bring it to the topic for having a discussion. We've asked him to sign up twenty-four hours in advance. But we never, ever, somebody showed up to meet. My sixteen years of serving, somebody showed up, signed up or not, and they wanted to speak, we always don't speak. And then that was a resident or not. Sometimes we had some hot comments in place of new business. I can see a couple of two or three men attacked us. And we did that a couple times. Everybody was saving these and then it would be loaded by the white ones. But to deny a resident, to make a comment, quote, an open public meeting, just wrong. Well, I hope that ever happens again in the future. I'm looking at somebody, and it's not cool. If I never says we're going to give that individual an apology to the window channel, you're just saying it wrong. So, I'll do it right now. Steve I'm all that. I, I felt, also more after meeting, I knew that. Carry on doing it. Okay, transparency, I know. Good seeing them to just try and get people sign up for YouTube and all that. Zoom, everyone call it. That's all good and well, folks. It's just like everybody here. We're here. We can see what's going on here. This is stuff that goes on and on and on. So I would ask you to watch your steps again, so we don't ever end up in situations like this. Like I said, maybe it's worth this three seconds while I'm coming on. We've got a lot of cure for that, huh? We don't have, we also are. Just like, I didn't notice you guys were calling for a second reception. Personal litigation.
Personal.
We probably have been having this. Okay, do you want to introduce that? And what I do is I'm glad to see this and I can still take it where I'm tracked. If the last meeting for the twenty-second also asked, don't be water rates. So if I'm correct, the stewards won't have two dollars if the water's running. So everybody don't have a stupid ticket. Okay, first of July, correct? And we like to pass. Okay, and that's about it. I have a transparency. Well, the community service yet? Is there any more discussion about waiting fees? Did we talk about tonight's party?
Mr. Chairman, um, I did reach out right after meeting. I did reach out to our attorney about leaving, um, and such. I did have others on. So just letting you know.
Yeah, what appreciate you doing. She's gonna be here for the session.
Yes, she says she says she's gonna attend the second.
Oh, good. I'll be. Let's find out with the community service.
Mr. Chairman. One more. Um, it's next July, not this July. Next July, July. He said this July.
Isn't that this?
No, it's finished by the show.
It's this July. It says July one, two, twenty twenty-five.
No, so.
The fiscal year should be on.
No, it says July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirty of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, but being your ordinance.
It's gonna go up to dollars July first, twenty twenty.
And then after that it's one dollar.
Okay, but we're, we're looking at ordinance three sixty seven. And it's written right here in section one. The charge for residential water is showing monthly based charge, thirty-one dollars. A dollar per year increase will occur July first in four consecutive fiscal years commencing on July one, twenty twenty-five.
For the, for the one dollar, for the four consecutive years.
But the two dollars. Okay, my point is, it's written in here as July one, twenty twenty-five is the start. So if that's not correct, then it needs to be fixed. That's the point I was bringing up, which is unconfident.
July, that's you could pay your professional.
I should have brought you the previous, uh, the previous ordinance, uh, news that's on the lower.
I understand what you're saying. Correct, but the ordinance that we're reading is past. We already have a fiscal reading. It commences July one, twenty twenty-five. So if that's not correct, then we will then definitely change it instead of. Just a question for you and I. Is there gonna be an increase for four years or three years?
Four.
Okay, so what's gonna show you?
Well, again, that's if the ordinance is reading. Because that next dollar, so the rates that are, that are before that commence are new rates.
This is the thirty-one dollars.
They are with the increase.
And then.
So then, yes. And then a dollar for the next four years, starting on twenty twenty-five. So those new rates right above that are increased to a dollar. Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Who's your back? Who's your best friend? That's the way you should see them. If you're gonna raise them, you should have it in.
Should have this, at this rate for this year for your fiscal years. So you're driving twenty-four, you can have an ordinance in states. Rates are gonna go up like one dollar for water and two for sewer. And that should state that, that works. And then if you're gonna raise it for the years after, you say effective July first, twenty twenty-five. July first, twenty-six, fiscal years, I gave up for a dollar. That's how it should. If you got time to remember. Man, I want to add a positive note here. First off, congratulations to Jeff. Shall I? Thank you, Daddy. Um, I don't know how these came out to the cemetery in the Marlin. But the ceremony was coming out there and. I think now when you used to have, there's a few blocks there, there's some, took my hat to Jeremy and Logan. They're in the cemetery in the, the ship. It's very well, so appreciate the effort of the court. Put the statement. Alright, that's all I've got. I'll send you some questions. Uh, see you guys in the next. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Bert.
Of course, Andrea.
She's not here. Uh, so you guys know, obviously, we do not, we do first, we've had some issues. Um, we are working on it. I feel we're closer and closer every day. Um, we did, uh, we have been taking care of things and, um, cleaning and. The pool chemicals are. Breaking right now, not on the way. Um, especially with as dirty as it was, but we got Bob in there. We got him all cleaned and he's been cleaning like three times. Logan and I have been working, um, believing the bathroom is a hot mess. And so we're, we still need to work on that. Uh, but today, the water was sixty-two, sixty-three degrees. So the guards and I, because our new certs, our new certification guards and our recerts are going to testing room tomorrow. Um, they, we got in the pool and ran scenarios and did testing and. Once you were in there for a little bit, kind of like the lake, it was good. And then when you got back out, you got back in, it was a little chilly, not a whole lot. Until some of mine, probably one of them might probably test, you won't know. Um, but it was great and I cannot tell you guys what an awesome staff we have. These kids were like supporting each other. The older guards were mentoring the younger guards. They're working scenarios together and, you know, we just continue to reiterate that their, first and foremost, their job is to keep kids safe. We talked about the park. Um, Logan and I are working together to run some, better run some park scenarios. Um, you know, maybe where something happened and we gotta shut the doors of the pool and keep people safe inside. We might have a simulated abduction, some things like that. Um, that we really just want these kids to, to prioritize and understand without causing anybody any trauma. We're not even gonna have to say. Um, but my tentative plan of this time is that Monday, if our park does not come in or it comes in, we will open swim without any heat. And we will disclose, um, a swim at your own risk. And we will open from one to five and then have maybe evening water aerobics until six, as long as the weather's permitting. But we will not with the night swim until the heat is on. Uh, we will also not do morning aerobics until the heat. The water is too cold and I don't know about you guys, but that's not a liability I'm willing to take. Um, and so that, that is where we're sitting right now. We're praying that our park comes in. Um, so that we can get fixed. Logan and Jeremy have really worked their butt off and helped us a lot and so. Also, um, you know, we have those two nice painters. Um, after I was speaking with Jess at the bar yesterday about the park thing and her painters looking, looking really good. She said she would go do those for us and donate them. And she obviously does a really nice job, so I'm pretty excited about that. And just as, as community members working together. So, um, yeah, I really wish we could have opened last weekend. Um, the weather was beautiful, but. I told these guys, and I feel very strongly, if we're gonna have these issues, I'd rather have them out for you to open and then have to be open and shut down and all of that. So we're just right in the positive train right now. Any questions for you guys?
So first I want to give you, this is Jeremy Jackson, who'll be our new assistant supervisor. And then Lucas Skidrum in the back over here. He's our summer helper. He's been doing it long. We just got him started this week, so. Uh, we're trying to get them up to speed with them doing. And the pool, she covered pretty much everything that I was gonna cover. The only thing, I'm supposed to have those parts tomorrow, because it's probably here. But, um, as soon as they get in, it's literally like a five minutes switch and it's the only one, so, yes, yeah. So I have to get something else out. So we had that coming up and then. Oh, we had a little, I had a conversation with the people involved with one call. And she was not the current business person, but we got it figured out that we are supposed to be answering tickets online, not just calling the people. And so we now have that set up in our component for one call. Um, we were not compliant before, but that is the difference. So I just wanted to be aware of that. Um. One call is to call the forty-eight. And then, uh, so I see that it's in new business, but. I can't even tell you, you know, the situation before we put there. That's what makes it familiar. Okay, so the MOU holds harmless agreement that is with Wireless. There is a power pole that is over here by the control unit that you can see inside of your roof. And it's got a completely pole. I called Wireless because it's in concrete and I don't have a new machine or a way to get that out. Did you have a pole, the poles that we bought from Wireless are too short for that pole? And so I asked them to give you a quote. They gave me a quote. It was around four thousand dollars to replace that pole. And I sent that to Anna because I sent you the quote and then a whole harmless agreement. But Anna and I agreed with the whole harmless agreement. Their language ended it. Completely identified them from any negligence on their own behalf or anything near you. And so she wanted to clean up some of the language that's in that area before we really did that. Um, so if, I would ask that the council put that on hold until we can get that figured out. And then I'll present it when you kind of, you can work that with Anna and, uh, harmless like that. But we will have to replace that pole. So, um. Uh, the other thing, I had another question for Anna. I haven't had a chance to talk to her. Israel Gordon, he's lived up as a big worker. Well, he had a little bit of a excuse, but he owns the venue now. The Dick Shoe has a top bill. And he is wanting to put a wall up there to water the venue. He does have access to the public water system out there, but he wants it on the north end where there's no water going to go that way. I have looked through ordinance and I have found where it discusses that you can't cross contaminate water systems. But nothing specifically says you can or cannot put a wall and have them. So that was something I'm gonna talk to Anna about. Um, let's see how we need to proceed with that. Because he said he's opening it out on timeline and he wanted to be able to do it or not. And so I'll get back to you on that. And then last but not least, we are trying to get everything set up with Facebook and YouTube so that we can live stream our meetings. We've had a little, couple of hiccups tonight. I've been getting some text messages saying that they can't hear us, things like that. Um, but we'll be working through those and trying to get that so that it's up and running and everybody can do it when they want to. And then we can hopefully too, try and get that information out. I've been trying to stay on topic with the website. And, uh, if you wanna talk to me, do some more, could you talk about some ideas that you'd be considering? Get the message forward, get some more information out, but that's something we'll have to look at starting the next couple of years. But otherwise, we've just been kind of running on stop lately. It's been a week, so. We have taken a lot of wood and a lot of, uh, furniture and stuff out in the middle. Here now, we're waiting to hold out the TBS and just trying to be comfortable, so. Most of you, is that your question? Maybe that's everything.
I have a question.
Okay.
Anything going on with your, your, your?
That's probably not gonna, I'm, I'm gonna probably just have to put it off for next year. I've got too much going on. I just have not been.
There's enough.
Set it to the final one here.
And then, um, something was brought up the last time about the siren. And I pondered it since then. I can hear the new siren in my house. But the other sirens, I see people aren't hearing in their houses. Can you hear the new sirens in your house?
I'm not sure if I can hear it in my house, but, uh, Casey, um, texted me after last meeting and said it was just a voice speaking, or it was just a voice text.
Well, no, the comment was, um, this is my concern, I've been twenty-four hours. And it's 2:00 AM siren and I'm in my bed, I don't know that I can hear that siren.
So the siren, sorry, I'm trying to make sure. So, the sirens are not designed to be heard within the home. They're designed to be heard outside doors. Yeah, center doors, yeah.
So there's not a true tornado siren.
Or outdoor, yeah.
Okay, I think we need to get that out there publicly, because I think some of our community believes that they should hear it in their house. As a way, and they're not getting that information. I mean, I don't hear tornadoes, but like, I mean, it's clearly different part of, but I think it keep up your, that your expectation of that siren.
Yes, and if you would like that, you have press release and posted information on, that I hear known. So our names are the National Weather Service and other schools, so I know some of the other, um, resources that people, that people can get, to be aware of the information, but.
That would be. Yes, thank you, thank you.
We can do that.
That's all I have to go, because I think he sort of. Right now, so.
Anything else, Mr. Logan? Yes, Charlie.
Well, uh, I got a clip of the Dick Shoe when he owns that property up there. Am I right or wrong, I think it's got water right in it, yes.
I think you're right.
But I think it does look more big. Because that's, I remember.
And it's multi, and it's multi-zone, by the way.
Because it is, correct.
Because I actually sold it. Because I actually sold it to them. So there's, you're correct, plus there's multiple, um, it's residential plus commercial, but so there's.
Correct, yeah.
It's kind of crazy up there.
Well, either with water, the minimum must be worth one second.
Anything else, sir, Mr. Logan? Casey's not here, you have anything?
So we had three annual fire stop. Um, there's some cases that were, uh, having trouble with the fire. And, um, there's none of the others, um, so, and it's it should be, it's, okay. Um, this house that's in the fire pit, it's clearly there's a problem, or, um, I can't, it's probably a, a disaster.
Rich?
The, uh, liquor license is about doing, uh, segment to return office, and I have, uh, going to, uh, state liquor commission for approval. The bottom shift for the town employees has been renewed for this year twenty-four and five. Our transportation documents. You see them, I have another sign, I have something that I can state for the senior, so I'm going to receive those back. Our kitchen is inspected today, and I need to pass the inspection. What is my, all right, so, that's all I have. Questions?
The, many. It's about, um, the, 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 the.
They do a whole three on, they can order it for some of the clients. And they want to do it?
Yeah.
And they know where I, oh, I do it. And they might just decide to be, could be, we just want to just.
I mean, I don't think you would.
No, 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 it's contact.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ordnance says. We have a third reading, uh, ordinance number three sixty-six, this is the advantage for the.
Ordnance three sixty six, ordinance of bringing the transitionary community committees to policy on the habit of self operating affiliates visionary to operate and maintain a community mission system. Um system must be established in the town of. Of. The promotion draft has the.
One second. Discussion.
And what is this, is there any public comment on this?
Is there any public comment about this? All favors set up? All opposed? Next ordinance is their um number three sixty seven. Yes.
Ordnance three sixty seven. An ordinance amending the following articles in section of ordinance number three fifty six. Establishing rates fees and charges related to water and water services after rights were part dividing for the regular days. The water service reads the residential service charges shall be a monthly base charge of thirty nine dollars. A one dollar per year increase will occur July first from four consecutive fiscal years commencing July first twenty twenty five. No, 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 you just need to that and then at least I can suggest that we make this. So I make a motion that we pass the ordinance three sixty seven. Yes, please, Mr. Attorney.
Uh I have two potential motions, the committee um and those in charge. So uh either the first idea is to um after base charge of instead thirty one dollars, we do current amount. And then go further down to commencing July one twenty twenty four. That's one suggestion, or the other one is to leave it at thirty one dollars and just change commencing July one twenty twenty four. If that would be accurate.
So you're gonna make thirty right now? I think thirty is good.
I think I agree. I think all of it.
So what we are saying is thirty one dollars on the first line issue.
Yes.
Thirty right now.
Correct.
So I think he's right. So you want me to add that this is an increase of the dollar.
That might help, that might help.
Yeah, that would be about over that.
Yeah, so I think we need to amend this by adding the word. Uh water service shall be a monthly base um charge. Wait, the charges for residential water service shall be a an increase. Shall be. So after the word B. Insert. A and. And then increase. To the monthly base charge. Two. If like the base charge of thirty one dollars. That's I think that clarifies it a little bit. So.
Do you want to say that the dollar is? Is that necessary?
Increase of the dollar.
Increase of. The charges, the charges for residential water service shall be increased. Five dollars to a monthly charge of thirty one dollars.
Yeah, that's not correct. And then the same language.
Okay, so um I'd like to offer amendments. So after the word B. Insert increased by one dollar to PTO. And then the rest of the sentence is. Read correct, so the chain of sound. The charges for residential water service shall be increased by one dollar to a monthly base charge of thirty one dollars. A one dollar per year increase will occur on uh will will occur on July first from four consecutive fiscal years commencing July end of twenty twenty five.
Say that the first word.
Everything else is the same, the only thing is is we're we're inserting the words increased by one dollar to.
You also wanna put that same language in the sewer, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I mean, so we need conforming language down to sewer. But change it from, is it one dollar or is it two? Yeah, it's two dollars. So you didn't have to change, so if I can get approval on that motion, I may.
I love it. We got a second. All favors set up?
Hi.
All opposed?
So then I have a second motion, uh amendment? Increased by two dollars. To this. Minute to be made then. So A to then. A one dollar. But but after the two, is it two dollars?
Oh.
A then or is it go back to one dollar? One, then go back to the one, so you have to put this in there, so then then. A one dollar. Okay, so my motion would be. Uh amendment would be after the word B. Service shall be inserts increased by two dollars to PTO because it's at the top. And then after twenty dollars before the A. You insert the word then. That's the motion.
All favors set up?
Please, can you give a discussion? So what about these other charges, the uh change these other charges for commercial? Also? From you, did you get that?
So the monthly base charge for commercial? What's the base for commercial?
And those new ways, so we fish it by the same amount.
They should all be the same.
All the same.
Yeah, we increase it all.
So. You'll need the same thing, make the same.
So I guess my, okay, I want to amend my motion. It has been seconded. Second, are you uh giving the? Make the conforming language probably.
I think probably.
So my motion changes to, well, actually, you know what, I'm gonna draw my motion, my second motion. And I'm just gonna request Rich to do conforming language. So before we're done with the question, when we make these amendments. Clock starts out correct, it starts with.
First reading?
First reading, yeah. Correct. Because when we make changes, I don't.
Hey, I, please, on your, you have three readings and that way you can make your adjustments.
Okay, so you don't have to start over, it's just like, it's just like regular, okay, that's what I need to.
Thanks, George.
Yes. That's all.
So now we.
Now we.
And on this ordinance, add a.
Second. All favors set up?
All right.
All opposed?
Ordinance number three sixty eight, an ordinance providing for the annual appropriation for the town of William, which is one year July first twenty twenty four, confused thirty twenty five. Do you have any change? I make the motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All favors set up? All opposed?
Ordinance number three sixty nine. An ordinance amending section one of ordinance two fifty two, providing for the permitting process and keeping a thousand minimum alcohol limits of illegal wine.
Any power comments? Of case? Is interner this to be able to read over to town hall? Yes. Let's start.
I make the motion that we approve. Uh third, second.
Discussion. All favors set up? All opposed?
Ordinance number three seventy. An ordinance amending section one and section two of ordinance number twenty four, twenty four. Providing for the regulation and use of punch board, slot machines, and all handling devices in the day of the chance in the town of William.
Power comment on that?
I make the motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All favors set up? All opposed?
Ordinance number three seventy one. An ordinance amending section one dash five dash nine of the town of William, this is how they call it vacancies in office.
Power comment? Same questions for committee available to issues, Harry, you better.
I make the motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh basically what I did on this is I took what was submitted um to the council by uh George. And then I took and searched other communities um and found Barnes um language and just basically would submit them together and just made it real quick, clear, concise, simple. But a lot of it is surgery. That's all.
All favors set up?
Hi.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
So there's only three uh places to post. So uh they can see what I typed in. Which is different than what we normally write on the manual form, that would be our official number petition. In the light of the new kind of CC. Um. Cooperation. And so I got the amendment um. To add the conference that they were in one time a minute ago, and signed by the mayor. Uh those are additional three things that are missing.
You want a question?
And that's on the.
Can you second that?
Yes.
All favors set up?
Hi.
Opposed?
And I did request, um so in nature, I requested a link from where those are to be posted with our agenda on Facebook page. So that it would be easier to find, you could just click on the link and it would take you right to where the ordinances and agendas are instead of having search. I also requested um our council packet, so we're gonna leave our agendas, the whole packet, unless it's personnel issues, which I've got. The dot hole, the whole packet be uploaded to the website, so the people can quickly unload the agenda, so the people can see the. That's just. Hands a little bit off, that was just.
Okay, now the noble business. New business, what would you take care of, Arlen?
Yeah.
Awesome, how about teacher?
Yes, sir, um so I had a Zoom meeting the other day with the with this text my gov, um I think it'd be a really good idea for us to at least look into. Um essentially, it's just a program that we get a uh textable number for the town of William and we'd be able to send out alerts, notifications. Um agendas, like they, I mean, it's essentially a really cool setup, you could have anyone that wants to um subscribe to whatever part or whatever route. I mean, it's it's pretty, pretty significant, um the town of Torrington or the city of Torrington currently uses it, uh Graybold uses it, and Lusk uses these guys. Um I do have another Zoom meeting with him on Monday, if you guys have any questions you'd like me to ask him specifically, or if you guys would like to come in, join in on this Zoom meeting, it's at, I believe at ten on Monday morning. But I will verify that in the, with you guys that for sure. Um but I just wanted you guys to have the information, it would be a two-year contract, I believe. Uh it would be two grand for the first year, fifteen hundred for the software and for the number, the software and all the things. And then the five hundred dollar like a setup fee type of thing, and then it would be fifteen hundred per year essentially as long as we would like. I do think it'd be a very good idea, more specifically for our town residents that don't use Facebook. Uh because I do have a lot of people coming in saying, hey, I don't use Facebook, how do I get the knowledge? And I, I mean, we're trying as best we can, we give it all out there, we post it here, we post it there, you know, we do what we can, but I do think possibly being able to receive these. Uh via text would be a great, a great way to give it out there to those people that are asking, so.
Does it go with the second?
Yeah, it did with texts, yeah.
Have you spoken to the last um people?
No, I haven't reached out to anyone, this, I mean, like, the media was just, yeah, yesterday, they, so, I mean, I could ask, I could ask Torrington. Um I do know that I have a big release, I live in Torrington, I can sign up for theirs, I haven't, but you know that that is okay, so. And that the company would actually help us with getting the information out there to our residents that this is a new thing that we're trying to work on and and how they can subscribe and all the things, so. Yeah, yeah. And he did say he was willing to come to council, you know, and discuss it with you himself too, so.
Yeah, another little question I just thought was um. You have been talking to me days ago, like, being anonymous, not only is George gonna stand up here, or Brian, who I talked to, he might not have a concern anymore. Tell somebody that you don't want.
Right. Mm-hmm.
To me.
Yeah.
But they can tell you that, that the popular.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could definitely ask, um I guess I don't, I don't really know how that would work because it would be their phone number that they use. So I don't know if they could do like, you know, the. Yeah, like the star sixty nine or whatever it is, I honestly, I don't know, that would be a question we have to ask.
Is this like the county uses or the town?
The city of Torrington, yes, the city of Torrington, Lusk, he said Lusk just signed on with them, and then Graybold.
Is it flat rate or is it per?
So it's flat rate, that fifteen hundred, or I believe the quote, I don't have the quote in front of me, I'm sorry, I I came unprepared. Um I believe it was ten thousand text messages that we'd be able to send out. Um anything more than that, and there's like, it it'll, it shows like, buy more. And so, yeah.
Ten thousand texts or ten thousand signatures?
Ten thousand. I believe it says texts. So, okay, we, so if we said, if we have four hundred subscribers and we send out four hundred, that would, that, yeah, that would be part of the ten thousand. And there is options to buy more, but I mean, I would obviously, we we need to see how how many people would want something like this and go from there.
I have like questions.
Yeah, no, 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 like I said, he is willing to come to a council meeting too, so I can ask him to come to whichever one will. I I, he's based out of, I can't even remember what he said, but I could definitely ask him to come, he's been. But again, I do have that Zoom meeting on Monday, if you guys are available, that would be another good, another good time to come in and ask them, yeah. This is basically, we just gave it to the end of, and telling you, I do think it would be a good idea for us to look into.
ordinance tree board?
Mr. Charlie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie.
I have a question, uh what kind of information is gonna be on these texts?
So essentially, we could set it up so like you could subscribe, like you could send, um let's say, uh council agenda. And so I would essentially send out the agenda every Tuesday or whenever, Wednesday before the meeting. You, if you subscribe to that, you yourself would receive that week to the agenda. Or like if we have some, something.
Great news, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, something crisis in town, if you guys are subscribed to that, you would, you would get that notification.
Well, usually there's enough, you got people around town that can spread the crisis anyway.
ordinance tree board?
Hi, Cindy.
Hi, Cindy.
Hello. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, do you have a background?
Please.
Okay, so the tree board was formed under the last mayor, it's Sarah Ingram.
There she is.
Yeah, she's signed. Kelly Greenwald, and then me, and I have gotten to a point where I need to let this over a couple of things and it's kind of a little bit, so. So.
Yeah.
Uh and so we had, we had discussed this a while back and talked about it, and we wanted to get all the Arbor Day stuff out of the way. And then we've heard you guys to the council and guys, she's interested, she wants to do this, she has knowledge of town, she knows what she's doing, she's already done.
Yeah, she does.
But I think she'd be very good, and so I would like to ask that you, so if my reputation in the tree board, you know, like her.
I accept the reservation. Whatever else. Just in the.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you, Wendy.
We have um in our pockets the letter for our um from Secretary of State as well as to Townness Office. And um so I just discussed with um Town of uh Rich. If we could have amended our vacancies, um but this is a whole different section. And so um we will come up with. With um that because we have to do more to be able to find it and in order to change dates. And so for everyone else, we received a letter um stating that we are out of compliance. Uh on our municipal elections held on May fourteenth, that they're actually supposed to be um held the second Tuesday of May. Uh ten of twenty-two election code book um takes precedent over town working. So we need to upgrade and um make sure that we're compliant with the security and why we stop it. So we will take care of that, find us a new, if, we don't need it for a couple of years, but we thought while we're all on this on the roll, let's do all done now. Um well, it's all fresh on the line, so that's coming. And then the second thing I have is just remind everybody, um it's on our Facebook page. But it's also um it'll be in all the public sites areas, is we're having a tax um structure one-on-one town hall. And uh it's next Tuesday, uh June eleventh at six P M. Um it is done by Asha Power Street, who used to be here in Ocean, and she's from the Wyoming Tax Parents Association, and so she's going to break down all the tax valuable information, group changes, um. Who's fortified the tax codes that passed into law, um and everything, and a lot of those go into effect July first. Uh of this year, but uh unfortunately, yes, Monday was the last day for the rebate. Um uh for, but there's still some other ones out there that you're still eligible for, um for tax as well as a constitutional amendment. Um and so um all of that will be discussed. A lot of property tax information will be discussed. Please come, I ask these guys to put, bring cookies to the.
Hello.
As long as.
Go to Pat's. Leave.
Sir? I got one more question. I'd like to know if there's a chance of getting an ordinance, uh I live across from a vacant lot that is full of uh dandelions. It all match my lawn against dandelions, I'm tired of fighting those dandelions, I think we need ordinancees so that won't happen.
Okay, thank you.
I I I went to the guy, I tried to be nice, I told him I didn't spray it, but he told me no. He said, he, but he told me, he says, go see Al, he didn't realize Al wasn't a mayor, that's bull crap.
Okay, we are going to go to a second session now.